I have no, like you say, it's not permitted through the county, but really we can't stop. We can't pull a permit because there isn't a permit, so um I would just. I mean, I I see what he's gonna do for the improvements, but is there a guarantee that that's gonna cause, I mean, is that gonna keep it safe? That's the biggest question. What I would have, I would have to prove that it's safe.
The changes that he's gonna make are more than being able to guard gun range, and the room department is less than a hundred yards away on the other side of our road. So that's what we're comparing.
I guess we'll see. I mean, I, what else can I do? Other than having a professional gun range person come out and inspect the field and see that, say it's safe or not, I don't know what else we can do.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I'm a, um, it sounds like that Mr. Bueker in the Sheriff's Department is even agreeing that the um, the bullets or the shots fired may have been coming from somewhere else besides the range.
They could, they could be, I can't say for sure. I just, I know when the deputies got there, they were watching.
Because I know just down the road from me, it looks like the chief people are down there shooting all the time, so people do get, I mean, it's a shame.
Mr. Trebley, would you like to speak?
Yeah, just one comment on these, any additional shooting. Our property has almost five hundred acres that surround Mr. Bueker's property, and I have a no shooting policy on our property. So none of that shooting would be from the west or south of this property. So, and I, and we never hear any other shooting over there. So, I mean, all the shooting we hear is from that range.
Yeah, um, as to knowing it's safe, when I did, when we started with that part, the National Rifle Association has standard designs for gun range, and I followed that, and we'll follow that again. As to other shooting, I was on my, out of my back porch outside with a fire pit on New Year's Day, and I thought World War III interrupted around me at midnight. And not on my property, but everybody it seems in the area was doing something I never do, which is firing guns in the air. But I don't know. I'm assuming for the purpose of trying to be a good neighbor, that I have, gonna try to address all these problems and repair those damages that happened, but my opinion on that.
I would just like to state that we had an investigation on where the bullet had come from. We actually took the wire, went through the wall, the direction that the bullet came from, went through, and closer to the shooting. So we actually got that document.
Mr. Chairman, I understand safety is, is the ultimate. But before, and just like Chief Fire Officer said, there's, there's other people firing guns out there. Mr. Bueker just said, um, he heard all those other guns being fired. Before any true accusations are being made against Mr. Bueker, we, we need to be absolutely certain that that's where the bullet came from. And so far, no one has been able to prove to me that it absolutely came from his firing range. It sounds like there's so much other firing going on, we need to be very careful how we're stating our facts here. So if Mr. Bueker has agreed to extend his barn and it's, um, National Rifle Association approved, there's not a whole lot more he can do. So, but I think he is trying to make things better, safer, so that's the way I feel.
I like that. I'm not an expert on gun rights, and I don't claim to be, but I don't know if that is, if you, the people that are here, um, are complaining, telling about the shooting, if Mr. Bueker does this, is that gonna satisfy you? That's the biggest question. I mean, if, if you, do you think that you would, that would solve the problem? But um, I don't know. One loss of life is, is a whole lot worse than um, anything that we could do here, so we, we definitely don't want that to happen. But if, you know, I think Mr. Bueker, in fairness to the public, that if you do these things, I think we should have some kind of inspection of the levy and saying that somebody that's does gun range, just say this is perfectly safe. And I mean, would you be willing to do that?
Yeah.
Would that satisfy the audience in here that if we have a professional person from the gun range come in and say this is, he's done everything he can do, it's, it's safe? Does that kind of fix the problem? I mean, if they say there's no more bullets coming, I, I don't see what the problem is, but, but I, I definitely don't wanna see somebody killed out there either.
And neither do I.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bueker, you, what, what's the biggest caliber you're shooting out there? Is it fully automatic, or semi, or burst, or?
Uh, the biggest caliber I shoot are my African guns, but those are rifles designed to be used at fifty yards or less.
Right, yes, yes, sir.
Um, these submachine guns fire pistol bullets, and that they were firing nine millimeter and forty-five.
Forty-five A C P.
Yeah, because that's, they were designed to be short-range infantry weapons.
Right, right.
Yeah, but um.
So, I mean, I think, I think he had said a two-two-three slug went through there, which I'm just wondering, you know, fully automatic, semi-automatic, uh, things can get away when you start running fully automatic weapons at high caliber, but it doesn't seem like we run real high caliber weapons, so to me it doesn't.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought the day that this happened, that the Sheriff's Department, when they called in a complaint from the golf course, I thought you had sent someone over there and to, to make sure that it was coming from there.
They were shooting that day.
Okay.
Yes.
And they did send someone.
Okay, that's, that's just what I wanted to clarify.
When the sheriff did go over to look at Mr. Delner's RV, um, they also brought a detective, as I understand, is that correct?
Lieutenant Willis.
Okay, and did you recover this load?
Yes, we did.
What was it?
It was a twenty-two caliber full metal jacket, um, from.
Five-five-six.
Two-point-three or five-five-six, or something that was a twenty-two caliber. Not a, um, not a twenty-two long rifle. It would be something that shot a twenty-two caliber with a full metal jacket.
Is that a two-two-three?
It would be a two-two-three, five-five-six. It could also be a different round, depending on.
And unlike a regular.
It's a rifle.
Yeah, unlike a regular twenty-two, it has a big shell casing, cool powder behind it.
Yes.
It puts a much more power to it.
Yes.
And during the investigation, did they actually able to determine the, the direction that that shell came from the gun range?
When, go ahead, go ahead. It came from that direction, but there's also, um, some wooded area, there's some trees and so forth there, so that light of a, a round, that projectile could be deflected without actually, uh, disturbing the casing, um, preservation, so it's not basically destroying it. So, and it doesn't take much because of the round being so light, so, but the direction was that direction. And I know I've had multiple calls from the areas and around it, which you have, and so forth, for people in rifles and pistol weapons, we've had calls, uh, there's a gun snip out there also, of course you have, um, but the approximate distance between his shooting house and Glenn's RV is about a thousand yards. So it's a two thousand, yeah, two thousand nine hundred and seventy-eighty feet. So, um, and that, and that's the, that was the part that we're trying to figure out is that part of distance didn't have a lot of energy to do as, um, it didn't hit you, it wasn't before. So, and then trying to figure out how far it were traveling from and so forth, that's the hard part.
But if it had come from a further part, that would be like, of course you later do this property, well over a mile away, you would even suspect that, wouldn't you?
Yes, but the, there's other residences that are in the area also. I, I know when the deputy responded to Mr. Bueker's that day, and then another deputy responded up to the RV park, there were no AR-18s or anything that was shooting a two-point-three or five-five-six caliber.
Right. So, I, I mean, I personally think that being responsible for the safety of people in my part, that if Mr. Bueker could have his gun range certified as safe and also produce his insurance policy with that, that I would be able to deliver a better message to our guests to make them feel safe.
Thank you. You agree with that, Mr. Bueker?
Yeah, sure.
All right. We will move on. If the next is, next little comment on our, on our, um, agenda, sorry. Our next step is presentations and awards. Number one, updated Central Florida Behavior Network. We have a lady here.
Good morning. You should have some PowerPoint slides that we brought along. My name is Kent Regan. I'm the chief operating officer, Central Florida Behavior Health Network.
Good morning. My name is Erica Tereshchewicz-Polis. I'm a senior program manager at Central Florida Behavior Health Network.
Now, thank you for giving us a few minutes this morning. Um, we are here to share that the Department of Children and Families has awarded funding to Glades County for an initiative, um, that was launched by Governor DeSantis to help end addiction in Florida. Uh, this stuff, this initiative started in twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two with seven counties, where it was piloted, and we're now at approximately twenty counties across the state of Florida that are doing this. It's called the Coordinated Opioid Network, um, Coordinated Opioid Recovery. We call it CORE. And CORE is one of the first of this county initiatives in the country. It started, it's a help on a model out of Palm Beach County. Um, it's a three-part approach that includes first responders who are turning in contact with persons struggling with an opioid use disorder frequently after an overdose, or coming into an emergency department, um, emergency responders treating them in the, in the community. Um, it then results in stabilization of that individual, um, as they start to hopefully move into recovery, and then helping them to find treatment and hopefully move into long-term recovery. So our role at Central Florida Behavior Health Network is to help launch this initiative here in Glades County. Uh, we'll be help, helping to identify the right people here in Glades County to be at the table, uh, who can be part of this CORE network. Um, we'll be having regular, so, taking regular meetings with these stakeholders. Uh, we'll be executing, what we've done in the past in other counties is execute a purchase payment directly with EMS, uh, so that they can get funding to help be part of this initiative. And then there'll be startup funding, uh, for other stakeholders, um, and not, mostly nonprofit agencies in the local community. This, the year one funding is eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, um, and there'll be additional funding for year two and year three to help start up this initiative. All right? Say a little bit more about CORE. Um, CORE, the, the basics of CORE is to provide twenty-four-seven access to support and assistance to persons who are identified as having an opioid use disorder. Uh, we, we help to identify medication-assisted treatment providers who can treat these individuals. Uh, we encourage warm handoffs rather than just referrals of persons to agencies and for assistance, but actually helping them with warm handoffs. Everybody asks to certify peers who have lived experience, who can, who can really come alongside these individuals and guide them through their recovery process, through each stage, and be there with them to help them navigate through the system, and like I said, all the way through the, the levels of care. Um, there'll be a frequent patient follow-up, seeing how they're doing and tracking them and following them through, and then, of course, there'll be tracking of data statistics of persons who come into CORE and, and are impacted by CORE. And with that, you have our contact information that we've provided. We want to be available for any questions, uh, with concerns that we go along. And we just wanted to just today, just let you know that this was happening in Glades County. Uh, we're gonna be working with, I believe, we're gonna be having a new county manager here, here very soon. We look forward to engaging with them, um, and as well as your, your EMS theater shop. And with that, any questions?
Um, I have a couple.
Sure.
So, um, so this, this is to take care of people that are addicted, but who in the county is going, are there gonna be people on foot in the county doing this, or are you gonna, um, and who's gonna recommend, who's gonna identify these people that need to help?
Um, that, we hope to, that will happen at all levels, um, emergency department, staff, EMS, as well as our stakeholders getting the word out that these resources are available and, and getting the right people engaged in them. Isn't anything there, Erica?
No, I mean, traditionally, and we've brought this up in eight other counties already, and so traditionally, we, um, interface with FQHC's, um, emergency or, um, uh, urgent cares, excuse me. So anything, any resources, every county's different, as I'm sure you guys are aware, so we kind of pull in, we start with the county level, and then we pull in EMS, and then we pull in a MAP provider, a medication-assisted treatment provider, and then we just kind of mesh all those services together with the resources that exist, and then the funding that we have to get these programs up and running to ensure that we can have that coverage within each county that we're in school.
Because right now, we don't have a whole lot of resources, but I don't know. Um, we do have a hospice building across the street. I don't know if you need office space or, or if you're looking for anything of that nature, but, um, I, I assume you would work with the Sheriff's Department too, as far as, um, identifying where the opioids are, are bad everywhere, and, uh, I appreciate you coming in and trying to help, but it's causing a lot of problems in all of our communities.
And I think the key word is the coordinated piece. And what we found, what we encourage is existing resources, that do exist, making sure that there's effective communication. And then the certified peers, I think, is a really significant piece, um, that we've seen over recent years, of getting persons with that lived experience to really be involved and, and, and make those warm handoffs. So, um, it won't be any office space for us. Our role is really gonna be helping bring those people to the table and get those communications going. And, and there's some great resources also, the Department of Children and Families, um, that will be meeting along with us, and will be resources for, for emergency response, um, and, and, and meetings to help with what has worked in other counties. So there's a lot of great resources available at this point as well, successful launches elsewhere.
Any questions?
So if we run across someone in our community, then we'd come right back to our EMS and advise them, and if they are.
I'm not gonna speak for them just yet, because we're just launching.
Do you have a card?
I do.
The rally was pretty prolific. Too boring. So if, if we're not established here, you, you're called.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're, this is fresh off the press, so we're, we're actually working with some other counties as well that are launching. Uh, this, the counties were selected by the Department, by the state of Florida, and they gave us, you know, we're a managed entity, we're one of seven managed entities, so our job is a, as a, as a nonprofit, is to manage dollars under contract for the state of Florida, and then we'll get, we're gonna get these dollars out to, to the county for the state.
So all that money that you mentioned, that is not all coming to Glades County?
Actually, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, all of that is coming to the county.
Really?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure you'll be working with the other agencies that are already here.
Mm-hmm.
We have a central handling foundation that's got some, um, it's juvenile health and mental health, but they're dealing with the same problems that you would be dealing with too, but I can give you that connection.
Sure. We welcome everyone to the table, and, um, yeah, that's what makes it work, is, is collaboration. So we're excited to start that.
And ma'am, what was your name now?
Erica.
Okay. Just can't hear real well.
Thank you for your time.
Did you, did you have something you wanted to say? Do I have a question?
Not at all. I would think that Glades County Health Department would probably be one of the best places to start, and even county probation, I don't know if you guys work with probation, but they have people that, they come to them first.
Sure.
And they're usually in trouble, um, and then, because we don't have urgent care in more than, correct, or Glades County at all.
Oh, that's Health Department.
So a lot of people utilize the Health Department here, so that's probably gonna be a great place.
I'll give her my card.
For you guys, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. All right. Moving on to public hearings, we have number two, case number RZ twenty-four dash zero three, Big Lake Mixed Use Plan Development.
Good morning, Chair Commissioners, Susan Duchesne, for the record. And yes, this is the second hearing for the Big Lake Resoning Application. It's a mixed, mixed-use plan development. And before I start, I have something I'd like to hand out to you. There were two adic, two additional items, and one of them was the title certification and the title search for the property, and then the use of correspondence from RDI. I believe your packets have it in black and white. I've just attached it, occasioning color, and so there's a packet for each one of you. And you need to give the clerk one for the record, and then attorney general.
And, Mr. Chairman, just before Mr. Duchesne gets started with her presentation, uh, since this is a public hearing, um, and a, a resounding case, um, the board is sitting in its quasi-judicial position, so we need to swear in witnesses, Mr. Chairman, anyone who is going to speak, we need to swear in.
So anybody in the audience that's trying to speak, um, we need to be.
Yeah.
We stand up and tell me straight away, where are you running?
Do you swear in firm that the test money you were about to give us is the truth? Nothing but the truth. So there's one in, Mr. Chairman, um, including Miss Duchesne, who can now proceed.
Thank you. I'd like you to know that this, uh, hearing has been properly noticed in the newspaper and, uh, notice was sent out to surrounding property owners. For this, to assist the public, it's not everybody was here at your first hearing. This is your second hearing, and this is the hearing, it's the, the adoption hearing. This mixed-use plan development is requested by Tredon Six LLC, and they would like the Board of County Commissioners to consider a mixed-use plan development rezoning of four hundred and seventy-five point seven-seven acres, and this property affords State Road seventy-eight and County Road seven-twenty-one. The project is called Big Lake. It has two phases of development. Uh, there's a master concept plan that's been submitted, which depicts the areas designated to each development phase. It has a layout of basic use categories, location of vehicle access, internal roadways, water management features, and weapons. The applicant's requesting entitlement of one thousand residential dwelling units, ten thousand square feet of neighborhood commercial, one million two hundred eighty square feet of general commercial, and two million five hundred square feet of industrial uses. The proposed scheduled uses provides a list of specific uses that would be permitted in each designated area of the master concept plan. There'll be six access points from County Road seven-twenty-one, and there'll be three access points included in the Phase One development. Two access points from State Road seventy-eight are proposed as part of the second phase of this development. This was heard in the public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Board on December tenth, twenty-twenty-four. The Planning and Zoning Board found this application consistent with the Glades County Comprehensive Plan and recommended approval for the plan development with conditions. Those conditions were provided in the last summary agenda item at your first public hearing. The BCC heard this, heard this request on December twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four. They had asked that for the second hearing, that the applicant provide a completed survey and some title, title research information, and address the concerns raised by the board regarding the industrial area next to residential uses. County staff will make provisions to the proposed ordinance for recreation and bring the criteria for major site plan and minor site plan for distribution to the commissioners. So in your packet was an ordinance for this, the major and minor site plan application as requested. I'd like to put into the record that this is an ordinance, the Board of County Commissioners of Glades County, Florida, amending the official zoning map of Glades County from Commercial General C two, Residential General RG, Residential Mixed RM, Residential Single Family RS, and Agricultural Residential AR two, Mixed Use Plan Development, for four hundred and seventy-five point seven-seven plus-minus acres of land located north of State Route seventy-eight and east of County Road seven-twenty-one Reservation Road, approximately one mile south at the Seminole Reservation, parcel numbers A zero-seven dash forty dash thirty-three dash A zero-zero dash zero-zero-one-zero dash zero-zero-zero-zero. A eighteen dash forty dash thirty-three dash A zero-zero zero-zero-three B zero-zero-zero-zero. A eighteen dash forty dash thirty-three dash A zero-zero dash zero-zero-seven-zero dash zero-zero-zero-zero. A eighteen dash forty dash thirty-three dash A zero-zero dash zero-zero-six B dash zero-zero-zero-zero. A eighteen dash forty dash thirty-three dash A eighteen dash forty dash thirty-three dash A zero zero dash zero zero six zero dash zero 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 zero. A eighteen dash forty dash thirty-three dash A zero zero dash zero zero five zero dash zero 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 zero. And A zero seven dash forty dash thirty-three dash A zero zero dash zero zero three A dash zero 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 zero. And this is your second public hearing, which is your adoption hearing. A recommended motion has been provided for the board. And Chair, with your permission, I'd like to have Morris Depew, who's also been working on this project, come up and update you on any revisions or conditions that have been, that we have prepared in cooperation with the board. Is that all right?
Yes.
Okay, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, once again, as Mr. Smith is coming to prepare to speak, on behalf of the county staff, I would also like to make as a part of the record of these proceedings, uh, the staff report, the application, excuse me, I'll start with the right one. Application submitted by the applicant, staff report, uh, prepared by county staff and put in Morris Depew as the consultant for the county. Uh, and also the proceedings from the first public hearing and the comments that were made on the record at the first public hearing. Uh, I would like to make all those part of today's proceeding and a part of the record that the board can consider as you make your decision today on this matter.
Good morning, Ben Smith, good morning to you, associates, for the record. Uh, we reviewed this on behalf of the county, um, and, uh, worked closely with Susan and Richard, and of course, um, with the applicant, uh, to get this reviewed, uh, get to the point where it is today. Uh, I'm not going to, Susan did a great synopsis of the project, and I'm not going to go over that at all once again, or the entire staff report, because you saw that in the first reading. But I did want to point out, um, one, uh, change that we are recommending. Um, we, uh, Susan was good to provide our staff report in strike-through underlying format so you can see how that changed in the staff report and also in the ordinance, um, how that change is represented. And then it really is just related to the condition regarding the, um, recreation facilities. And that, um, the applicant was good to remind me that our initial, uh, recommendation was for at least twenty acres of recreational facilities. Um, and they have, uh, further specified how they plan to provide those facilities. Um, the changes to that condition in the draft ordinance, uh, that is before you, um, utilizes that twenty acres as the, uh, the requirement for the total area of recreational facilities. Um, it also, uh, further clarifies that, um, at least three of those acres are going to be active recreational facilities, and they've actually proposed specific types of facilities. Those are included, um, the clubhouse, swimming pool, tennis, football court, basketball court, play area. Um, and then they're also, in addition to that, they're proposing at least seventeen acres of passive recreation areas, uh, walking trails, things like that. And, uh, up to twelve acres of that may be comprised of their local facilities. So we support that, um, we're, we went ahead and added that to the, uh, ordinance. Um, and so that is, that is there for you, uh, to consider. The other thing, um, that we received from the applicant very recently is some requested changes to the schedule of uses. Um, I would characterize some of those changes, uh, uh, as an effort to address comments that were made, uh, at the first reading regarding the compatibility of the industrial uses with the residential. Uh, they're proposing, uh, addition, additional buffer, uh, sorry, a, a larger buffer between the residential and the industrial area, goes from thirty to fifty feet. Uh, they're also proposing setbacks from, uh, industrial, some of the industrial uses, uh, to existing dwelling units, uh, the actual structures. Um, that's, they, they've provided that, I think that's also in their packet, those changes that they're proposing. Um, we, we support those, those changes. Uh, and, uh, the other, let's see, sorry, the other, the other change is they're asking for an additional use to be included in the schedule of uses, uh, including, uh, rehabilitation, comma detox center. This is something that the applicant has stated is part of the agreement with Cleveland Clinic, that they, um, they need this use included in the schedule of uses in order to have the type of facility that they want to have here. Um, they are proposing, uh, they, if you look at that, um, in forens, they have, uh, the condition on it that is limited to Phase One and the commercial de- commercial general area. Uh, we support that, but we're also going to recommend that you consider, uh, some additional language on that. Um, and we did discuss this with the applicant yesterday, so I don't believe this is a surprise. Um, the major concern that we're trying to address is, uh, we agree that having this type of a, a, a use in the schedule of uses is likely appropriate, um, as long as it is in conjunction with, uh, the facility that, um, Cleveland Clinic is planning to provide. Um, I don't, I, I think, uh, coming in at the last minute and suggesting that they have a standalone detox center that would be operated by another entity, a little different, um, situation. But if, uh, if we can add to this, that this, this use would be ancillary to, and as a part of, the hospital or med- and medical office use, and, uh, that that, uh, that seems to be the appropriate way to ensure that it is part of that, um, medical campus that they're proposing. Um, so that's what we're asking you to consider, adding to that if you do, if you are inclined to approve that, uh, that additional use. Um, other than that, um, I, I'm sure the applicant can provide a little more context for these things. And, um, I believe that's it, that's all, that's the summary of the changes from the last time this came before you, uh, so unless you have any questions, I'll, so, um, let you proceed.
Uh, yes, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to further clarify what Mr. Smith, uh, spoke about with regard to the additional, uh, use added to the schedule of uses, the, the, um, concept that I have and my understanding of is that, uh, the hospital facility licensing from the state of Florida, not from us, but from the state of Florida, uh, includes, uh, that type of use as a part of the, the licensing for the hospital facility. And so, uh, in my conversation yesterday, I made it very clear that, uh, it is not something that I would support as a standalone, separate, um, use or, or licensed facility, but rather if it is an ancillary use of the, of the hospital facility. And if the use is as a part of, and those are important words, uh, as a part of the hospital licensing and hospital usage, and on, and as a part of the same facility, uh, as, as the hospital, uh, the same footprint, the same location as the hospital facility, then, then I would not object, uh, to the addition of that use from my standpoint as your county attorney. Those requirements are very specific, uh, language, and I think those need to be, uh, incorporated into the, uh, use reference on the schedule of uses if you are going to approve it. And again, because of the license, state licensing for the hospital facility, I, I think it is in conjunction with, something that is, it's a use that is considered in conjunction with, normally with hospital facilities. So I, that, from that standpoint, I think it's okay.
Mr. Chairman, well, Mr. Cramble, do, uh, you know, when they started the, the airport out there, there was a lot of speculation, everything going on, and then they said, well, it's got to be approved by the FAA first. Um, with this hospital licensing, does the state actually have to approve that there would be something put in there? Or can Cleveland Clinic just go in there and say, we're going to build it? Or does it have to go through the state and say, no, you don't have a need for it there? We're not going to let you do it? How, how does that work?
Well, and, and the applicant, I'm sure, also will have some comment to that. But it's, it's my understanding that generally speaking, it is a part of the license, of the state licensing. So it's not just a, um, we, the state of Florida is going to issue a license for you to operate a facility so that you can do this separately.
Right, so the state would have to see that there's a need and allow it to be there.
I, I'm not sure about the, the level of review by the state that is required of this specific use, or whether it is a state license for a type of hospital facility that includes in the schedule of uses for that licensed operation, this type of use. I don't know which one of those two is, I apologize, I don't know that. The applicant, man.
With Donald Lawrence, for the record, I wouldn't let Amy speak, but just before we get spun off and, um, I don't know how to say this, other than, we gotta stop saying Cleveland Clinic. Right? We have, we have not, uh, this is a medical facility, um, we're not permitted to discuss who the end user is due to contractual matters, you know, on our side of the ball, but it is a, it is a world-class medical provider, um, we must best not include Cleveland Clinic.
Good morning, commissioners, for the record, Amy Tope with Russell and Andres. Uh, I have been sworn, and I'm the layman's attorney on this project, so I welcome the applicant. Again, we would very much like to thank Susan, Ben, Richard, everybody else who has spent so much time and so much of their expertise reviewing this to make sure that this is something that you can approve here today, so we are incredibly grateful. As Susan mentioned, the parcel is approximately four hundred seventy-five point seven, seven acres, and it's east of County Road seven point one Reservation Road and north of State Road seventy-eight. We are proposing a mixed-use plan development that would allow for up to a thousand dwelling units, up to one point three eight million square feet of commercial, and up to two point five million square feet of industrial. Currently, the master concept plan that is in your packet separates the parcel into two phases, phase one is on that northern portion of the property and includes, um, seven hundred twenty dwelling units in addition to the parcel that is the general commercial parcel, that is where the medical facility that being discussed is posed. And yes, to clarify, um, I think of a little bit of background on the licensing share requirements. So hospitals aren't licensed separately from your traditional standalone rehabilitation facilities. So hospitals are, this type of use is included within the master license and share, and the reason for that is when you have folks who come in who have any type of injury or illness that may be withdrawn from drugs or alcohol, um, typically they need to stabilize before, you know, adequate care can be provided. So that's where that detoxification use comes from, it's just part and parcel to really any hospital, we see it all over the place, not just in Florida, but all over the country and world. So that's really what that use is there, um, to memorialize, you know, it's truly part and parcel of the hospital use. And as far as licensing, hospitals are licensed by the state as hospitals under one regulatory program. The more, um, traditional, like substance abuse rehabilitation facilities that we would think of, you know, like some commercials for things like that, that's like just under a different program, and that has different financial reporting requirements, medical reporting requirements, um, operational requirements than a hospital would. So it's just different programs under the Florida statute and the Board of Administration. So I hope that clarifies that issue. And before I turn it over to Fred, um, do y'all have any questions for me?
I, I, I think you misunderstood my question. If I have a hundred acres and I have a billion dollars, can I just put up a hospital? Or does the state say whether I can or not?
The state has to license a hospital. That is, yeah, the State Department will.
Okay.
Okay, eight percent of it. Oh.
Good morning, my name's Fred Roblich, and I'm the planner on this case. Um, I'm from RBI, the Institute of Planning and after check for it, and my office is in Fort Myers, Florida. I do have, I have a brief presentation today, I'm not gonna go over everything that we went over last time, obviously, but I do have, just for reference, I thought it might be helpful to have a larger version of the master concept plan, so it's, you know, I can't read the one that's in the presentation. And then I do have the presentation to hand out, because there's no need to put it on the screen, it's only three or four slides I'm gonna go over, so if I can pass those. And all the whole ones, the whole thing, or this one? Okay.
So if we can, please make as a part of the record, uh, handouts that Mr. Roblich was handing out at this time, especially the larger version of the master concept plan. If we'll have a good record version of that.
Actually, I think I do want to hand this, this one out, because you had a presentation from last time, I have some, I have some additional slides that I just sent over yesterday, so I don't think they were part of that.
Well, that does a part of the record this way.
You want to actually, Doug?
Yes, well, yes, I do. Let's take it to the end. Okay, uh, Amy summarized this, so I'm gonna, um, jump right into, uh, you know, slide, slide four is called, is titled, "Questions addressed since the first hearing." So, since there's quite a bit to discuss, so slide five is where I'll start. Um, it's titled, "Industrial uses not included." So, um, what I wanted to do was produce one summary slide of the industrial uses that we did not ask for in the zoning request. So, on the left is a long list of uses that from the beginning we determined that were not appropriate for a mixed-use development. On the right are ones that staff further reviewed and felt weren't appropriate for the plan development as well, for a mixed-use plan development. So on the left, some of the uses that we, that we have nev, that we have not requested, so these would not be part of, part of the uses and would not be permissible in here without another re-zoning. Some of the type of like automotive wrecking yards, chemical storage, fertilizer manufacturing, fisheries, junkyards, landfills, heavy manufacturing, uh, mineral extraction, prisons, racetracks, uh, in the industrial section, we did not ask for rehabilitation or detox center, sawmill slaughterhouse. So those are pretty intense uses, and I think you can see why we didn't include them. Staff also felt that there were a few that they didn't agree with, some just because they're not necessary, like aviation facilities, we're not gonna put an airport in the middle of the mixed-use plan development, that's a pretty obvious one. But a couple in there I think are ones that have been mentioned before, so asphalt and cement plants are not part of our requested uses, concrete block and brick manufacturing are also not part of the requested uses. So, if we were to ever want to do those uses, we would have to come back through the entire process, through the planning and zoning board, through the two hearings here, we would have to have a specific site plan designed that would show that it's compatible with those, with the surrounding uses, with off the property and on the property. So those are the uses that are not included as part of our request. The uses that are included, really the high end of it is, is, uh, probably light manufacturing, but we said that's all enclosed. And then there are a few that maybe, I re-reviewed these, thought, all right, here's some that I think are still intense, let's add some additional buffers away from existing residential areas. So on page, on slide six, some of the accommodations that they have all went over, but I wanna put my own words to it, I guess. One is, uh, you know, it's a required thirty-foot buffer that has specific plans, um, and this applies within the plan development and to the boundaries of the plan development. So it would affect the flooding properties, but it would also affect internally our own development standards. So we're, it's thirty feet is required, we're saying fifty feet, we're just trying to show that we listened and we tried to add a little bit of extra, that's above and beyond the code requirements. But then, in addition to that, we wanted some setback conditions, and this is a common thing that, 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 that happens. Some land development codes even have these as a standard called supplemental standards for specific uses, and they add these as a regular part of the land development code. Uh, the, Mr. Smith and, and some people that worked a lot with Lee County, I took some of these from Lee County, stuff that had some of these as standards, so this is where I got some of these. So some of the more intense uses that we thought deserved additional setbacks of five hundred feet from any existing residential dwelling unit was arenas, transportation terminals, trucking terminals, and truck service areas for truck stops. Boatyard and boat repair are also considered sometimes a, an industrial, or a heavier use that has some maybe noise, sometimes some odor, so these, these are kind of things that, that are, are heavy traffic, and we thought that was better to have a buffer of two hundred feet from any existing residential. So those are the two things, the, the two different types of things we're offering up, additional buffer within and against, and then additional setbacks for the, for specific uses. The, um, other change, the other thing that we had to address was the survey. So we want to say that the, the survey was, was accurate, uh, we had a completed survey to four hundred, uh, seventy-five acres, point seven seven acres have not changed, the signed and sealed survey was, was accurate, but there were some details regarding how it was notated in the legal description and the title aligning with that, and those have all been corrected. So we have a new title, revised title opinion and title certificate, and then updated the survey to match that title certificate. So there were six things in the staff report that listed needed to be corrected, and we find, we, we met all, some of those we completed before the first hearing, but since then, we completed the other work. There's a lot of, a lot of work by Amy, um, to get that title opinion turned around and accurate, and she, she was able to pull it off and do it before this hearing, so, um, as long as staff and everybody else agrees, we, we, we fix that. The other slides that I have here, uh, well, actually, let me jump back to the rehab and detox use, I think they explained it clearly, and we're happy with that description. The, uh, what I would say now is this actually, this mixed-use plan development as far as the rehabilitation and detox, actually is an improvement over the current zoning. It's, the, the area where the medical facility is proposed currently is Zone C two, and could be, we could build that there without of this mixed-use plan development, and it allows a standalone rehab detox center. So this would actually be a further, uh, I guess, reduction or restriction on the type of use that would be there, so it's a kind of elimination of that standalone in that way. So I think that's a, uh, improvement, uh, as part of the standard conditions of this zoning. Uh, the other slides, uh, I have three other slides that were just the, the big summary slides of our overall development. I don't need to go into each one of those, um, they break down the acreages and the square footages for each of the areas, um, for the overall request, there's a development summary that, that goes over the total number of acres and uses on there, and a list of the deviations, none of these have changed since the last presentation. So these are the same, so if there's, I guess, specific questions about those, I'm glad to go into those in more detail, and I can go, uh, in the, uh, in the packet too, I have all the, uh, all the other slides from the first presentation's backup slides as well, so you can go into any detail that you want or questions you have, but I want really here from you, rather than hearing from me, and then we'll, we'll address the specific things as they come up. So that is a made part of the presentation that I have, and you can, uh, go in there, and that's some of my tea, that's some of the material. So now we're here for questions.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Pringle, this would just be, as of today, it would just be the zoning, we're not approving the concept plan, we're not approving anything else, it would be just the zoning that we're asking.
You will be approving as a part of the plan development ordinance, it will include the master concept plan, which is page eight of the handout that you just received, that will be approved as a part of this ordinance. What you will not be approving is the development agreement, uh, that we need to complete, uh, later, and that will come before the board later for approval. You are not approving the financial assurances agreement, which will come back before the board for approval later, you're not approving, uh, the development order, you're not approving any of those other parts, uh, subdivision plan, you're not approving any of that, just the master concept plan. But that is a part of what you are approving today, is the master concept plan, yes. Mr. Chairman, if I may make one more comment for the record. In reviewing, um, the draft ordinance, I'm, I'm not sure that it says, but it, I just wanna clarify, um, in, in the list of commercial, uh, general uses and the schedule of uses, we make reference to, or the applicant requested, and it is included, uh, a use of medical laboratories, and in that, uh, use, we make sure to clarify that no medical waste storage or disposal on-site will occur. That's in the language of, of the use. But then, when we get to the industrial, uh, schedule of uses, um, we say for the medical laboratories that no medical waste storage on-site, I would just like to add that words should be consistent, or disposal, so that it says, "Medical laboratories," parentheses, "no medical waste storage or disposal on-site" in the industrial, uh, use, uses in the schedule of uses. The purpose in all of this being to, to make sure that it's very clear, there will not be medical waste storage or disposal on-site. In either one of those, that's what we're suggesting, so, just to clarify. And we'll fix that on, on a version of the ordinance that gets up.
The ordinance also includes, as, as Attorney Pringle had mentioned, the planned development master concept plan, that also has an additional attachment, which is your plan development basing schedule.
And there are only two phases in this. And, and Mr. Chairman also, as requested by the applicant, if it is the pleasure of the board, to, uh, also approve this, the request for the additional, uh, use of the, what do we call it, detoxification, what's the phrase?
Rehabilitation and detox center.
Okay, rehabilitation and detox center. Uh, if it is the pleasure of the board to approve that, that would also be added to the schedule of uses, again, with the limitation that, uh, it can only be a use that is ancillary to and as a part of the, uh, the medical facility, uh, used in all the same site as the medical facilities, right?
I, I cannot speak to that. Look, at, at this point, the only thing that we can speak to, because I'm not, I'm not a final operator, I'm not in the business, I'm not able to get in the business, but the only thing that we're really specified to is that any facility of that nature will be on that campus, right? I can't tell them, hey, it's gotta be in the building, I can't tell them, you know, it's, it's gotta be a separate building. From my own personal experience, I know, you know, from my hometown, they specifically have a unit, and it is a separate building, because it needs to be a separate building. Somebody, excuse me, somebody comes into the ER, they have certain needs, and then they get put in a separate building, because that's what, but, but again, that's not my business, so right now...
It's a part of the same facility.
That campus, that northwest corner, that is the, the hospital campus, whatever we're calling it, that is where it would be. You know, I don't know, do they sub that out? I don't know if they do or not, you know, do they run it? I don't, you know, is it a subsidiary? I'm just, I'm not interested in hamstringing ourselves and us taking this zoning approval back to our tenant and then saying, "No, we're out." Because that's, you know, that's what, I, I apologize, but I don't know their business, right? I don't know the nuances of, you know, ancillary, you know, what does that mean? Does that mean there's a stipulation on square footage or location? All we can say is, if they decide to do it, if, because there's a laundry list of things that they do, right? X-rays, emergency facilities, you know, it's, it's a long list of items of, of services they provide. If they decide to check that box, all I can tell them is, okay, it's gotta be on your property, it's not, it was, oddly enough, it appeared to be allowed use in the industrial, I, I don't know why, but, you know, we, we took that out because we're not, we're not interested in that. We've got a hospital campus, if they decide to do it, it's gotta be on that campus, but I really don't wanna, I don't wanna agree to even terms like ancillary, because I don't know the legal definition of that, you know, what does that mean? Does that mean it's gotta be ten percent of the overall square footage? I, I don't, I don't know. So I'm not interested in ancillary, I'm not interested in telling them they can't sub it out, because it, it may be something they sub out, I, I don't, I don't know, but it will be part of the campus, you know, the overall campus, you know, with the help pad and, and the emergency services and everything else on there, if they decide to do it. Again, I'm, I'm speaking hypothetically, but I can't hem them in, because it's taken a lot of effort to draw them to this county. And I can't go in and say, "Hey, I know every other county in the state of Florida allows this municipal sign, but guess what, we're not going to," because I, I, I think it will set out the park and we'll be done. So I, and I'm, I'm sorry for parsing words, but I'm not an attorney, and I, I just, I don't wanna be hampered with that. We will, if they decide to do it, it would be on that campus, but beyond that, that's all, otherwise, you're gonna throw the baby out in the bath for her, because I, I, I can't go back to them and say, "Hey, guys, we're gonna change the lease that you sign everywhere else in the country, because we're special." I mean, we are special, but I don't know we're that special.
Well, I don't think we intend those to make it part of the hospital, just as long as it's on the campuses, that's what we were asking for.
Well, so, so the whole idea is that the hospital licensing issued by the state of Florida will cover, should cover, uh, needs to cover, needs to allow this. It is not a standalone operation, not a standalone facility, not separately licensed, but rather is as a part of, and that's why I made reference earlier to the fact that those words are important as a part of the, the medical facility. So, um, if we keep the words as a part of, and I'm not trying to get testy, but, um, that has to be, for me to not object to it, that's, that phrase has to be in there, uh, that it is clear that it needs to be a part of the licensing issued by the state of Florida for the hospital facility, and also, it needs to be on that site, and that's what I intended, uh, not, doesn't need to be in the building when I say facility, and I'll say, and I will add, Mr. Chairman, if it's acceptable, to the board, that it's on the facility's site. Can I help you?
Certainly, fine, I understand, but I'm, I'm, I still don't, I don't understand the other part, the part of.
As a part of, yes, it's not gonna, it means it's not going to be a standalone, it's not gonna be something that is, uh, that is separate from that medical facility, it's a part of, as a part of the medical facility. So that, so that, as an example, if you come back, or, um, say you come back to that location and say, "Okay, well, the medical facility is only going to be, uh, a detox and rehab facility," then the answer is no.
But, but it's as a part of. Part of in conjunction with, only because, again, I don't know that they, if they do that, I don't know if they sub it out, you know, I don't know if it's, you know, premier medical facility hospital and premier medical rehab LLC, I don't know, but in conju, or, or in conjunction with, I, I understand, we're not, we're not gonna go out there and just build a rehab center, right? That is not the plan. In conjunction with, right? Or sitting next to, or, you know, whatever, but I don't, I just don't wanna, I don't wanna unnecessarily inadvertently legally tie them up, other than saying, "Yeah, it's gonna be both."
So it, we still need as a part of, that, that includes or makes reference, and if they need to read the record of this proceeding today, they can, to understand that our definition, our interpretation of the phrase as a part of means that it will not be developed separately or independently, it will be developed as a part of the medical facility, the bigger medical facility, the bigger state licensed medical facility. I think those words need to be there, and I don't think they're gonna have a problem with that, and if they do have a problem with that, then I can clarify what that does mean. So I think, I think that's important, that is important to me as the county attorney to have those words in there. And, and as a part of the facility, uh, site plan, uh, that, that will, that will enable you to build it someplace in the footprint of that site, that's all, okay?
Yeah, and, and again, uh, because as a part of seems awfully, you know, ambiguous to me, but what we're saying is, it'll be on that campus, and it'll be basically sitting next to whatever the other hospital facility is, medical care facility is, right? But it could be, it could be licensed separately, it could be a separate building, it could be all this, but it's gotta be, again, I, I don't, it's gotta be next to a, a, a more traditional medical facility, is that?
It's, it's, that's the definition of as a part of.
Okay, well, okay, well, I didn't, I guess I didn't understand the difference between as a part of and in conjunction with, like, what's the, what's the difference between those two, but it sounds like they're the same, but I just have their service.
I'm from Amokul, I don't use many of them.
Hey, if I had a county attorney telling me that, um, don't let this, don't let this big hat fool you, I got work to do.
Why not you?
Yeah.
I don't wanna, uh, repeat this, that, or, but, so, the one word you said in there was sep- separate licensing, and part of, review, it seemed like sounded that it was under the license of the medical facility, not a separate licensed place, or can't be separately licensed, but it's just part of the medical facility campus, but not, not a standalone without anything else.
And I don't understand the licensing, how that works.
Yeah, but that, that might be important.
So, so to clarify again for the record, the, there could be separate licensing that does occur through the state of Florida for that use, but, and that's where the use of the word ancillary becomes important, if that, uh, use, if you go to the state of Florida and get your license for a detox and rehab center, but you don't have a license for a medical facility, then that's, that's a problem, that's not acceptable. It needs to be, there needs to be a medical facility licensing in place, and then either as a part of that, in conjunction with that...
Or separate from the licensing.
Separate license, but ancillary to that medical facility.
Primary, primary use on site.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And that's the rea, then that's the reason for the use of the word ancillary, is it's subject set to the primary use of the medical facility.
And, and again, again, we're not building a heliport to fly in detox patients, right? I mean, there's a reason there's a helipad there, there's a reason all that stuff, there's a reason there's the emergency drop-off, you know, those things are specific, but, and, and look, I apologize, you guys don't have the advantage of having seen the site plan, so, sorry, I'm speaking forward, the site plan is gonna see, you know, as, as Attorney Pringle can, can attest to, you know, there, there's a, there's a, there's a medical helicopter pad there, you know, there, there are things that obviously when you look at it, you're like, oh, okay, well, I understand, that's it.
Yes.
In all reality, Mr. Pringle is just protecting...
No, no, I, I, I take no offense, I just wanna make sure that I'm...
We have a dump on the side of Lake O'Koachobio there because of those words.
No, I, I just don't wanna our deal blow up because of, you know, we didn't word things quite right.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, if I might, so, when the final language is, is made... And, and, Mr. Chairman, if I may, so, when the final language is, is made a part of the ordinance, if there is any further clarification that is required, um, I'll be glad to provide that. So it is, there is no desire to create havoc or an impediment, uh, on the county's part of it.
The only thing that you're trying to take account of, and I appreciate that.
Yes, so, we'll, we'll get there.
Mr. Pringle, he said that we hadn't seen the site plan yet, this zoning has nothing to do with site.
That's for, yeah, I, I missed that, you had seen it, but he has.
No, uh, the master concept plan, I, I did see a drawing of it. Uh, the master concept plan, when you, it's on page eight of what was handed out today. When you look at that, there, it's big bubbles of uses. Uh, um, and so it is not the detailed site plan, and they'll have to come in for a site plan review of the, of the different elements, of the different specific site plans for commercial development or for industrial development.
And it would be a major site plan because if you can't do a minor site name, you're a plant developer.
So would that come to us or do it?
It goes to the planning.
Planning is on board. And they would review that, and that would have the detail of, of the, of the actual site plan, uh, specifics of the infrastructure and the building footprints and, uh, the square footages and, um, all those other elements that, uh, the planning and zone board normally considers when they do a site plan approval. You're just approving the big concepts, uh, in the master concept plans today. And there's a reason for that, and both parties benefit from doing that. Uh, you benefit because you see the places where the different types of development are going to occur in the master, as depicted on the master concept plan, and that's binding on the developer. The developer also has the benefit of knowing that these areas of the master concept plan that you are approving as a part of your ordinance, your, your plan development ordinance. So they know where those areas are as well.
Mr. Smith, do you have to leave?
Yes, I do.
Do you wanna make your public comment before you leave?
Well, I just wanted to state.
Just start with, with, just taking a, I guess, I'm just.
Good morning, I'm sorry I have another appointment. But I did wanna state that I think this project is coming in as being a Lakeport resident of Glades County, I've lived there a long time and I wouldn't live anywhere else. But we need to have doctors, we need housing. I have a friend who would love to come to work over there, they have nowhere to live. And we need something for Glades County. We need the doctors, we need the housing, we need the employment, and most of all, I need a tax relief. So I do hope you would consider it because I see, and like I said, as a Lakeport who is right next to the project in Glades County, I see it always good things. And hope y'all do too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for seeing me, and so I actually.
Didn't wanna interrupt you, but I wanted to make this comment.
So that's all I have. Uh, yes, ma'am.
So I have one other person that wants to speak too, um, is it Cindy Harlan?
Cindy Healan.
Cindy what?
Healan, H E, sorry, got my writing happening, should be a doctor. Hi, my name's Cindy Healan, uh, eleven oh eight and eleven thirty four Cypress Tree Street. Um, I didn't have a lot of information, um, on this beforehand. Um, I didn't get information about the previous hearing. So today I came to kinda see, um, exactly what was going on. Um, so I'm not really sure, uh, how, how I wanna speak on this. Again, because I'm not even sure where it's located. Um, I believe it's right at the end of my street across seventy-eight, I believe that's the property that we're talking about. Um, it's also my understanding that there is a small portion that is owned by the same property owner on the other side of seventy-eight, which includes a, um, an easement on what we call Pig Island. I'm just curious if Pig Island is gonna be affected, or if anything on that side of the street is gonna be affected. Cause rumor has it, um, the owner of the property has mentioned that he owns the canal. I have since found out that is not true, which I didn't think it was. Um, and, uh, the reason I bought the two homes, uh, is because, uh, there isn't a whole lot in Lakeport. And it's my house in the country, and, um, I like the small fishing community. I do understand that people that live here would like other things here. Um, but my concern is the noise and the traffic and, you know, how that's gonna affect everything. Again, I haven't seen what they're gonna be doing, um, so rehab center is a concern for me. Um, and of course, if this is developed, uh, I will no longer have a house in the country. Um, so I might have to rethink that situation. Uh, my other question is, is this going to be another Jewish community like we have in Buckhead? Or is this going to be open to everyone?
It'll be open to everyone, and it's not, even the Jewish community in Buckhead's open ended, everyone too, so, um, nobody can deny you.
So that was.
As far as on the south side of seventy-eight, this, what we're doing here today has nothing to do with the south side of seventy-eight.
Okay. Um, and as far as the Jewish community in Buckhead, um, I had questions about that as well because I didn't know how that was, would be against fair housing. Um, I actually applied to purchase in there, can't get a call back. Um, and as far as their application to purchase in the community, um, their application alone seems to be breaking lots of fair housing rules and regulations. So I'm not sure exactly how that is allowed. Um, but I would like more information on what is going on across the street. I, I'm only one person, so I'm sure that what I have to say doesn't really, isn't really gonna affect whether or not this happens. But, um, I, I was just here to get more information and, uh, again, so much for my house in, in the country if this happens. When is, and, and I'd like to know, like, when this is going to, if, if it is approved, when it would start, when it would break ground, how long it would take. Um, you know, I'm not sure about ambulances and helicopters, I am deal with airboats, but, you know, that's what I bought. Um, so that's just why I'm here, and, and my concerns.
Well, all this information is on the website, right? Well, this package is on the, I mean, any public can get to it. So you can, you can go to glades.com and go through to the, um.
Excuse me.
Sure.
It's on the agenda, if you go to the, uh, Glades County and you go to the homepage and you go on the, uh, Board of County Commissioners on the left side, agendas, and you can click on the Board of County Commissioners, and this, you would pull this up, you put on the link.
And it would tell me what, what's going to be there and?
Yes, as far as today's hearing, and also the last hearing we had on the twenty-third was on the website, and then the planning is.
Everything here, yeah, true.
Oh, thanks, okay.
I have a copy in the office, it's an office copy.
Okay.
In, including, Mr. Chairman, the master concept plan that is, uh, exhibited C to the proposed ordinance is also on the website. And it will clarify for you that the approvals, uh, proposed for this ordinance is for land lying north of seventy-eight and nothing south of seventy-eight. That's actually the picture of the master concept plan proposed.
Okay, and since you did mention, um, the community of Buckhead being open to anyone purchasing, um, do what I speak to about the fact that that's not true.
We have a couple of representatives here today, and then maybe I'll introduce you to them.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Uh, Derek Lee. Um, at the last meeting, I just remember a couple of things that were stated, kind of, below the level a little bit. One of the things stated, uh, I know there's a, a situation concerning, uh, I think we call it market pace, market-based housing and the split between phase one and phase two. And I think at the end, they mentioned something about that the majority of the market-based housing will be in phase two. I'm not saying. Uh.
You can answer your questions, Mike.
All right, well, the crease, the question I was having is, uh, seemed like there was no real, I, I didn't look at it. Is there any timing between phase one and phase two? And if the majority of the market-based housing will be in phase two, then what would it occur? Number one, and the second item, uh, was concerning, um, I know you'll take care of the water and sewer thing. But the issue was, was that only for phase one or was that for the entire project? Because phase two has industrial, industrial usually has a lot more requirements from a water and sewer. And so if you have an issue with phase one, what's the plan for phase two? But again, I know that's separate from that. And the other suggestion I would have is, I know, uh, for phase one, you have, uh, uh, the residential and commercial, and then you got a big commercial section in the phase two. But along seventy-eight, you got those two partials, the two areas that are residential and mixed, I think. Is it possible that that could be part of phase one, so you know at least you can get that done? And I know you got that spine we put in, which again, is gonna be part of phase two. Which means, is it possible that that can also be phase one, since you have the infrastructure in place? I know you got an issue with how you wanna make that happen from a financial standpoint. But having those pieces in place, set the stage for when you ready to do the first, a lot of it is already in place. Plus, you take care of the issue with the mixed use for the, uh, residential piece. Cause I think they stated that majority of the housing in phase one will be the single family, right?
Town roof.
Town roof.
Yes.
And then you got the, I haven't got to use right words, the market-based housing, but. So I, I'm just trying to get some clarity on that. Again, I just was sitting in the back and kinda listening to that, and I thought I understood that, so. Not that it'll change anything, just for informational purposes, if you got anything more concrete on it.
Sure. I appreciate somebody reading the package, that's, that's good, that's good. They inform public. Yeah, the, um, the market rate housing is not gonna be, it's not gonna start in phase two, it's gonna start in phase one. And then, you know, phase two, the, the pricing will do with pricing this. Um, but no, we, we plan on starting in phase one, you know, as soon as we can, and that'll be, that'll be market, then future rate, future rate pricing. Um, regarding the, you know, the, the, and I don't wanna speak for the county, but regarding the water and sewer for the second phase, we don't have that worked out. You know, we've got a passive out of phase one, and that's all in a phase two is. It will be more intense, you know, industrial, well, it could be, depending on the uses, but it could possibly be more, you know, water intensive, uh, but we're yet to work that out. And then as far as the spine road and the, um, what is it, commercial, what's the zoning for that forty acres?
That was neighborhood.
Oh, just neighborhood commercial.
Okay, the neighborhood commercial piece on, on, um, seventy-eight. Um, yeah, would, would we like to start that right now? Yes, but because of some nuances with, with separation, so we do have to put that spine road in first, so, and it's, it'll be costly, so we're not, we're not gonna start that until, until later. I mean, we do actually have people that are interested in that parcel now, but we can't give it to them because, you know, we gotta build phase one and then run that spine road and go. So unfortunately, that'll be, that'll be yet to come. I, I think that's all your questions.
Any more public comments? Ain't none. What's next?
Next is from the board to consider the motion that I provided, and then to have that motion include some of the proposed suggestions that we talked about, language, at least we will have it in.
Let's accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve adoption of an ordinance of Board of County Commissioners of Glades County, Florida, commanding the official zoning map of Glades County from commercial general C two residential general, RG residential mixed, RM residential single family RS, and agricultural residential AR to mixed-use plan develop MPD for forty-seven point seventy-seven plus minus acres of land located north of State Route seventy-eight and east of County Route seven twenty-one Reservation Road, approximately one mile south of the Seminole Reservation. Partial numbers A oh seven dash forty dash thirty-three, dash A zero zero dash zero zero one zero dash zero zero zero, A one eight dash forty dash thirty-three, dash A zero zero dash zero zero three B dash zero 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 zero, A eighteen dash forty dash thirty-three dash eight zero zero dash zero zero seven zero dash zero 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 zero, A eighteen dash forty dash thirty-three, A zero zero dash zero zero six B zero 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 zero, A eighteen dash forty dash thirty-three, A zero 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 six zero 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 zero, A eighteen dash forty dash thirty-three, A zero zero dash zero zero five zero dash zero 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 zero, and A zero seven dash forty dash thirty-three dash A zero zero dash zero zero three eight eight dash zero 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 zero. Applicant and property owner Triton Six LLC, providing for strip reserve, providing for several ability, and providing for an effective date based on the contents of the application, the findings and analysis, and the revised staff reported date, January the sixth, twenty twenty-five, and the findings of fact and evidence at the public hearing, including the public input and testimony received at the public hearing. And adding the word part of?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, if you want to add the additional requested use for the, uh, is it detox and rehab center or rehab and detox center?
Rehabilitation and detox.
Rehabilitation and detox center use to the schedule of uses, then I would recommend that you make that a, uh, conditioned on that use being as a part of the medical facility and on the medical facility site.
Do I have to try to say all of that, or?
No, so we'll just, we'll just say, so included in what I'm sure it gets.
So included is what Mr. Pringle said.
And, and, and also, Mr. Chairman, and, and also with the change to the medical waste, uh, use to, to clarify that no onsite disposal can occur in the industrial categories as well, right?
Yes, included.
Okay, right, good. We'll get you there. Yes, sir. No, I think that's a complete. Yes, sir.
Second.
All right, so I got an election by Commissioner Sack, second by Commissioner Taylor, is there any discussion? We'll do a roll call vote, myself, Jessica, Mr. Vars.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
I'm, I'm still concerned about the industrial, but, uh, yes.
Mr. Sack.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Pass as five zero. Okay. Thank you, thank all of y'all.
Thank you.
A lot of work, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Um, I made a mistake when I was doing public comment, uh, I thought, I seen Blake, or, I probably, it was on the other one, but do you still wanna come up and speak? Um, I made a mistake when I was doing public comment, uh, I thought, I seen Blake, or, I probably, it was on the other one, but do you still wanna come up and speak? Okay. Next up is our consent agenda, which is number three, county warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda, county warrants.
Did I have any bills in there?
No, I didn't.
All right, I got a motion by Commissioner Sapp, second by Commissioner Patterson to approve county warrants, is there any discussion? All in favor?
All right, I oppose.
Passes five zero.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just step in right here. I've had several conversations with the clerk and with the clerk's office and with you about a little snafu that we had this time. Because we don't have a county manager currently, your past practice has been, uh, to have the county manager approve all, all warrants and then to bring them to the board for approval as well. But your policies don't necessarily require that, and that is awfully cumbersome, uh, to, to have everyone paid on time sometimes. And so in talking with the clerk, uh, and, and with, uh, Ms. Tasha, um, the finance director, I just wanted to clarify, you don't have to do that, even though that is our past practice, our policy doesn't require it. And we may be talking about and may bring back to you maybe a modification of the, of, of the policy to clarify, uh, that we don't have to go through all those steps and, uh, which might help us in the future to better streamline approvals of warrants. Did I say all that correctly? Close, in the vicinity, okay. No action is required, just a clarification.
Okay. Public input on business agenda items, anyone wish to provide public comment on agenda items, please fill out a comment card on the table in the interest of the Commissioner Chambers. Please note, all comments on agenda items are limited to three minutes, can't endorse the board's discretion. Number one for our business agenda, and we have number four, resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero six. A resolution of the Glaze County Board of County Commissioners to provide for budgeting of the Glaze County Tax Collector.
Good morning, Gail Jones, tax collector for the record. I'll be short and sweet. Um, you have in your, in your packet the information, but I'll just give you a brief overview. Every four years when it's election year, the tax collector has to come before the board to request a resolution. I have to choose whether I'm gonna be a fee officer or whether I'm gonna be a budget officer. All the small counties, we don't collect enough in fees, so I have to be a budget officer. And just to, to let you know, in last year, all the fees that I collect, whether it's from tags or titles or the little bit that we get on, uh, commission on the real estate taxes, um, I give back to the board. And last year I gave you a hundred and fifty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-two cents. My budget last year to operate with employees and the data processing and everything is six hundred and ninety-one thousand nine hundred and nine dollars. So there's no way I can be a fee officer. We've always been a budget officer, that's what small counties have to do. So in order for me to do that, you have to adopt the resolution, which you have a sample, the one that you've always used every year. And, um, once it is, you approve it, then it will continue like what we've done. I will submit my board, my budget to you instead of Department of Revenue, and I will get my funding from you, excuse me, from you. Otherwise, I wouldn't have enough money to operate, and I couldn't collect your taxes.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve resolution two zero two five dash, uh, resolution guaranteeing and appropriating the budget of the fees, provided that such salary shall not exceed the compensation prescribed therein, and the tax collector shall determine and expand the funds necessary for the proper operation of her office, including capital outlay.
Uh, I got a motion by Commissioner Patterson, second by Mr. Barnes. I'll read the title of the resolution into the record, says Glaze County Resolution Number twenty-five dash zero six, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Glaze County Board to provide for budgeting of the Glaze County Tax Collector, provided for scrip errors, provided for conflict, provided for liberal construction, provided for severe ability, providing an effective date. So the fees that you do charge, do those come back to the county, or?
Everything comes back to the board. Nothing is kept in my office.
All right, so we have a motion, any more discussion? All in favor?
I don't follow, so I'll follow.
Oh, a roll call, sorry about that. I got, myself is yes, Mr. Chamber.
Yes.
Mr. Sapp.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
I have my thumb right here, so I can take it.
Okay, when the, when the resolution is completely signed and everything, then it has to go to Department of Revenue, and if I can get a copy, uh, for my records. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Be back in four minutes.
All right, number five, request approval of budget amendment twenty-four dash twenty-five dash zero seven, corresponding resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero to adjusting the budget of the general fund, planning and zoning departments for practical services with Morris to Q.
Good morning, uh, Tasha Morgan, Finance Director. Um, the budget amendment before you today, as described, is, is requesting to adjust, adjust the professional services budget of the planning department. On April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, the board approved the award of RFQ twenty twenty-one, Gush ten A, and a general agreement with Morris to Q for planning, surveying, and planning services. During the twenty-four, twenty-five budget process, um, the department, along with the county manager, had included an estimated seventy thousand dollars for professional services, um, due to all of the developmental, um, needs going on within the county. The, uh, Community Services Department has utilized them, um, more than we originally anticipated. So within the first, uh, two or three months of the fiscal year, we fully expended, uh, the budget for professional services. So the budget amendment that we're proposing is, um, requesting an increase to the planning and zoning budget, um, specifically the professional services line item in an amount of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That is an estimate, it might be that, depending on what the utilization is during the remainder of fiscal year. I do wanna note that a significant portion of those services are invoiced to and reimbursed by the developer groups. So we hope that most of that expenditure will be offset by a corresponding revenue. There is a resolution that accompanies this budget.
Other than the, like the, um, our industrial park, that's coming down hard, but we can't, can't happen.
Yes, sir, that would be paid by the county.
And that's part of this.
Yes, sir. If you have any questions, hold it.
All right, so it's a resolution of Board of County Commissioners and for Glaze County Board operating amendment to the twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five Glaze County General Fund Budget. Your motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve budget amendment twenty-four dash twenty-five dash oh seven and corresponding resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh two.
Motion by Commissioner Sapp, second by Commissioner Taylor, is there any discussion? Do a roll call vote, Commissioner Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Sapp.
Yes.
Myself is yes, Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Passes five zero. All right, number six, request for approval of budget amendment twenty-four dash twenty-five dash zero eight, corresponding resolution twenty twenty-five dash three, adjusting the budget of the general fund and capital outlay fund for the purchase of a fire truck, total cost of four hundred and seventy-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven.
Thank you, Tasha Morgan, again, the next couple budget amendments that we're gonna look at are actually just appropriating the funds into the budget for actions that the board has already taken. Um, so the first one is twenty-four dash twenty-five oh eight, and as you recall, in August of twenty twenty-four, the board approved, um, I'm sorry, engine one was involved in an accident and was a total loss. Um, the board has approved the purchase through an intent to purchase a new fire truck for four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Um, the county has received just over four hundred and eleven thousand dollars from insurance on that loss. And we have moved forward with, uh, the purchase of an apparatus that costs four hundred and seventy-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. Sorry, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Um, this budget amendment is budgeting the insurance proceeds and the expenditure for that apparatus, um, with the, with the shortfall of sixty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-five cents coming from the capital outlay fund.
Mr. Chairman, I, Ms. Morgan, on the, on the next page, on the budget amendment, it's got three hundred and eleven thousand dollars, that hundred and one, is that a typo on that?
No, that's not a typo. So the way we budget, the first hundred thousand dollars came in from insurance prior year, so it's a carryover.
Right.
And then the remaining insurance money came in current year.
So the correct, now that is the four hundred and eleven. Yes, that was my question. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve budget amendment twenty-four dash twenty-five dash zero eight, and corresponding res- resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero seven.
Motion by Commissioner Patterson, second by Commissioner Barnes. I'm just reading the title of the resolution, which is pretty simple, but, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners in and for Glaze County Board operating amendment to the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five Glaze County General Fund and Capital Outlay Budget. Um, any discussion? Do a roll call vote, Commissioner Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Sapp.
Yes.
Myself is yes, Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Passes five zero. All right, number seven, request approval of budget amendment twenty-four dash twenty-five dash zero nine, accompanying resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero four, adjusting the budget of the capital outlay fund to provide funding for the renovation of the Dog Connor Building.
Um, as you're aware, Glaze Youth Livestock has applied for, um, state funding for the renovation of the county building, and the board at the last meeting agreed to, um, provide additional funding to supplement that grant amount. Um, it's my understanding that the county has agreed to, uh, handle the payment transactions associated with, uh, the renovations. And as a result, we do need to budget therefore that project within the county's, uh, budget. So the budget amendment this before you is appropriating, um, the full amount of the grant or the project with one million dollars into the capital outlay fund. It's reckon, recognizing proceeds from Glaze Youth Livestock and seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, which is the grant amount. And then it's budgeting up to two hundred and seventy-five thousand of county funds from the capital outlay fund.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve budget amendment twenty-four dash twenty-five dash zero nine and accompanying resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero four.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Taylor, second by Commissioner Sapp, I will read the resolution, the resolution of the Board of County Commissioners and for Glaze County Board to operate the amendment to the twenty twenty-four, actual twenty twenty-five Glaze County Capital Outlay Budget. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Vows. Oh, the roll calls, hang back. Roll call, Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Sapp.
Yes.
Myself is yes, Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Passes five zero. Keep your own toes there. All right, request approval of budget amendment twenty-four dash twenty-five dash ten and accompanying resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five, adjusting the budget of the capital outlay fund to appropriate additional funding for County Route seven twenty-one from the Seminole Tribe.
One final amendment, um, the county entered into an interlocal agreement with the Seminole Tribe of Florida, which was subsequently amended on October thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. The amendment included additional funding from the tribe in the amounts of one million and three hundred and ninety-seven thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars to cover the differential costs from phase one. Um, the tribe has wired that funding to the county, and we've received it. The budget amendment is adjusting the budget of the bullpen seven twenty-one project within the capital outlay fund to appropriate additional funding and anticipated expenditure.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve budget amendment twenty-four dash twenty-five dash ten and accompanying resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh five.
Motion by Commissioner Sapp, second by Commissioner Barnes, resolution, it's a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners in and for Glaze County Board operating amendment to the twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five Glaze County Capital Outlay Budget. Uh, any discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Sapp.
Yes.
Myself is yes, Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Passes five zero. Number nine, formally accept appointment of Commissioner Patterson to Glaze County Youth Livestock Dog Connor Committee.
Working out on behalf of the Glaze County Clerk's Office, um, on December twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, Commissioner were appointed to committees for twenty twenty-five, Commissioner Sapp was reappointed to Glaze County, uh, Youth Livestock and Dog Connor Committee, and Commissioner Barnes is alternate for the motion by Commissioner Patterson and a second by Commissioner Sapp. Later in the Commissioner comment, Commissioner Sapp stated he would rather see Commissioner Patterson appointed in his place. So the motion before you today is just to formally accept the appointment of Commissioner Patterson to Glaze County, um, Glaze Youth Livestock and Dog Connor Committee.
I, I believe the, I believe the Commissioner Sapp said Commissioner Barnes, not.
I did.
Yeah, I thought, I thought you did. Well.
They changed it, they changed it to Barnes.
That's all I meant.
Yeah. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to formally accept the appointment of Commissioner Barnes to the Glaze County Youth Livestock Dog Connor Committee for two thousand twenty-five.
Okay.
Motion by Commissioner Patterson, second by Commissioner Sapp, is there any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Oppose? Passes five zero. All right, number ten, Glaze County Business Park Progress Report.
Good morning, Chair, Susan Duchesne for the record, introductions, good morning. Before you today is a progress report on the Glaze County Business Park. Morris to Q is going to provide that update to you. The Board of County Commissioners have, have directed the county staff to coordinate with Morris to Q Associates, prepare a proposal for a development plan in subdivision for the county-owned business park. And the intent of that is to ready the property for potential buyers. And with that being said, I'm available for questions, but, um, Ben Smith and Morris to Q's been giving the formal report, progress report.
Hi, good morning again, again, Ben Smith, uh, for the record, with Morris to Q Associates. Um, so you remember, uh, you may recall, uh, the few that were here, um, we prepared a feasibility report on this, uh, property initially, and, uh, looked at the environmental considerations, utility considerations, and planning considerations, uh, for this piece of property in terms of, uh, what, how, how a plan development, uh, should, should proceed, and what the constraints of the site are. Uh, based on that feasibility, feasibility report and our, uh, review of, uh, applicable standards, uh, and your comprehensive plan, uh, and your direction to proceed, uh, we've initiated, um, several exhibits, uh, that would be part of the plan development, uh, rezoning. Uh, we are recommending, uh, that you proceed with an M P D rezoning of the property. Um, and the other task that we have undertaken is to, um, review your, um, the table of zoning district uses that you have in your land development code, um, and propose, uh, based on that, uh, table, a scheduled uses for this business park. The exercise that we went through, uh, to, to arrive at that scheduled uses was, um, and I believe this is included in your backup, we looked at the, uh, permitted uses for the C two, I B one, and P D districts. Um, and, uh, you can see those in three columns, uh, as that page with some, some items struck out. And what we were trying to arrive at is, what's, what are the uses that are allowed in a P D? What are calculated in your commercial, uh, your heaviest commercial on the, uh, district? And what type of uses would likely be appropriate in this location? But really this, what this scheduled uses ends up looking like is, is up to you all in terms of your vision for this property, what types of uses you would like to attract. And that is one of the things that we're asking for direction on from you today in order to proceed with preparation of the plan development rezoning. Um, understanding what types of uses you would like to attract will help us make a determination. Um, understanding what types of uses you would like to attract will help us make determinations in terms of, uh, what the master concept plan should look like, what the proposed development standards, uh, should look like. Um, in order to accommodate those types of uses, uh, to the best, the best we can without knowing what exactly will come in. And, uh, of course, we're going to prepare those with the most flexibility in mind in terms of, um, understanding that it could be, uh, uh, convenience, uh, fast food restaurant that wants to come in. Or it could be some type of a retailer that wants to come in. And we want to accommodate lots that will be ready for any type of use, whether they combine, uh, lots once it's platted. Or, um, use one lot or several of them in order to develop their use. So that's one of my main questions to you, have, have you had it up, an opportunity to review the draft master, master concept plan? Uh, which identifies several tracks for, uh, development, and these could be subdivided further, obviously. Um, and have you had a chance to review this scheduled uses? And do you have any, um, direction, recommendations, or questions about any of this as we, uh, would like to proceed forward?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, um, this looks good to me, I mean, there's a lot of uses. And I agree with the ones that are stricken. Also understand, not all of these uses will come. So I'm not seeing anything that raises any concern or that would disagree with the kind of.
Okay. Excuse me, Mr. Chair, does, does, uh, the way that it is drawn up right now and platted? I know at one point we had talked about being able to move lines around to accommodate, uh, future uses, is that still available? Is that allowable? I- is it actually platted or is it all open right now where we can plaid as needed?
So, uh, it's not, it's not currently platted at the moment. Uh, however, uh, the environmental resource permit, the ERP that is done for this, uh, property does identify tracks. Uh, and it was set up that way, so, and the, the, the lines that you see here follow that, that the tracks are identified on that permit. Um, I will say that ERP has since expired. Um, you will, as, as, as part of the development process, that will have to be, you have to apply for a new ERP or amend the existing ERP, uh, in order to proceed with the development of the property. Um, I don't believe that we need to do that now, I think we can proceed with the rezoning first and then, um, come through afterwards and, and, uh, proceed with the ERP.
So let me ask you this, the ERP that they designated these four tracks, is it, are they trying to say that you can only sell four tracks in here? Or why, why, I mean, kind of could come up with these four tracks, but I guess it's, because I mean, if I'm an open, say, somebody wants to put a restaurant in there, they don't need five acres. Um, so is it saying that if they did, that's all we could put on one of those tracks, or?
Um, no, so, uh, ERP basically, um, it sets up the, uh, how the water management of the property will be accommodated. Um, and so if, uh, it, it, it had to, it was somewhat conceptual nature because there was no actual development of this, this property proposed at that time. Other than what you were getting permitted for the, the training facility, I believe. So this, this was done in somewhat conceptual nature based on sort of a, uh, a logical subdivision, that it wasn't actually subdivided, but a logical subdivision of the property based on where that road is, where the wetlands are located. Because those are part of that ERP, um, and they're identified. Um, and where that, so the road is, where the wetlands are, where the training facility is located, all of a sudden now you're constrained to something that looks out like this. And so that's, that's what you end up with basically back into it.
But it can be modified.
Yes.
Each track to be subdivided or whatever.
Yes, so you, so you can further modify, uh, the idea being, these are just general bubbles. Like I said earlier, for big, like, I mean, the master concept plan approval is just, just general approvals. And then you can further define, uh, in the future through amendments and modifications.
So basically, the next step is just rezoning and then we can do anything we want to after we get it rezoned.
And what is most important is the scheduled uses. Uh, because that is what someone, uh, a potential, a prospective developer is going to look at to see whether, uh, number one, whether the use they want to make of the property is allowed. And number two, whether the other uses that are also approved by the, by the plant development approval are compatible with the uses that they want to make of the parcel they're interested in buying. So it's, there's twofold reason that the schedule of uses, that you should seriously consider that list of uses there. And make sure that it is, uh, what you view as the landowner, uh, to be your desired use of this corner parcel. It's, it's, uh, at a strategic location, right, for, uh, Glades County being there at the corner of seventy-eight and twenty-seven. And so that schedule of uses, I believe, is probably the most important element, uh, the boundary lines we can change easier in the future than, than maybe the schedule of uses. People are going to rely on that schedule of uses when they're looking at coming to, uh, to this parcel and building.
Mr. Chair, if I may, the one thing I would like to add up for them to know is, as you all see, the roads being put in. And that's advantageous for this piece of property, that it's being put in by EPTO, and the county's not having to improve that. I'm not quite sure of the, the standards from, from EPTO.
Um, there's a couple of considerations there, the, this standard of the roadway that they're at, they're actually constructing, constructing. And whether or not, uh, the utilities, uh, that would need to be in place to serve any of these parcels, um, are, are in place now. Or would that, would that have to be added at some point in order to accommodate development of these parcels? So when we prepared the feasibility report, we were asking, uh, for the as builds for what is there now, we received some of that. And I think since we, since we completed the feasibility report, I think we actually did get sent some additional materials from Fort Haven. Um, but we need to review those again and, and determine what is there. And as part of the subdivision process, uh, that is when you would come in and design, uh, the, the water sewer and stormwater management facilities that will serve this site. Uh, and those would have to be permitted through the various agencies in order to have these shuttle run, just to say. Unless you make a decision to stop after the rezoning and say, well, let's see who comes in. It's up to you how far you want to take it before you actually have a user coming to you, um, with, you know, the thought that, well, if somebody comes in and we really want to attract them. And we can say, oh, it was already subdivided, the utilities are in place, all you need to do is apply for a site plan, that's very attractive. But, um, if somebody comes in and says, well, what I want to do doesn't fit with what you've already done, we need to reduce some, some things, that would not be, that would not be good. So, um, we can talk about, more about that after the rezoning, after we set up this template for how the subdivision would be put in forward.
You went some through it, I was like, I really wouldn't want a flea market down there, I really don't want a dog center. But we can add that at a later point, alright?
Can we, can we include those in there?
Yeah. Uh, that's strictly. The second part's.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. I, I mean, if they put a flea market in, why don't we put it around?
We can, we can strike that.
Yeah, let's do that.
Have a commercial kennel, Mr. Chairman, you say?
That would be a bunch of yapping dogs. Across the street, but whatever.
Fair, okay. Well, and you want to consider if you are a, um, a commercial entity looking to locate here, you're looking for your use to be covered. But you're also looking at what other uses can locate right next to me, so I think you're probably wise to be thinking about that.
And if any guys leave up, you know, they can relay that.
Alright, I'll be looking to do it because that completely missed the kennel.
And if, if there's something that you think should be added, um, I think that, that we have, I know that's a tougher thing to dream of while we're sitting here, but if there's something that should be added. Um, even if it's not something that's contemplated by the Glades County Code, one thing we can do is add it to the schedule of uses and, uh, come up with a definition for that use that would be part of the company. So that's another option.
The restaurants include fast food or, um.
I think it's in drive-through.
Without, yeah, with drive-through and without drive-through, both are permitted uses.
And that's because we treat those two facilities differently under our code.
And that, and in my opinion, or my recommendation is, and I, we ask for the, the, the plant development that was approved earlier in this meeting, was one of the things that we asked for in their schedule of uses, they did accommodate it. Um, if any uses can come in with the drive-through, that they would, uh, complete a stacking or queuing study, um, to demonstrate that they have enough, uh, room for vehicles to stack on their site. That it doesn't exceed, um, the limits of their site, cause traffic happens either on this little, little roadway that's internal or down a bit on seventy-eight, uh, that would be worse. So, um, just making sure that they're, um, during the peak periods, uh, whatever it would be for that use, that they have enough room on their site to accommodate all those cars. I think you probably all looked into it, Chick-fil-A or Culver's where the lines now wrapped around the site and off into the roadway. So we want to make sure that that wouldn't happen, and it affects the other users of the, of the site, so.
Also, on, on here, Mr. Chairman, the animal shelter, I believe, you know, veterinary clinic or hospital would be okay, and so they don't be right back in the kennel, you know.
We already got that anyway, I was kind of wrong.
Yes, sir.
Exactly.
Exactly.
We don't need that on that. I don't, I don't particularly like bars, cocktail landings, private clubs.
Sorry, what was the one that you just mentioned, I'm looking for.
Uh, it says animal shelter, veterinary clinic hospital.
Okay.
So is a, so, Mr. Chairman justified by, so is a veterinary clinic slash hospital okay?
I, I believe so, yeah.
That one's okay, but just not.
The shelter.
I'd love to see it back, I'd kind of like to. And that one is, it says convenience stores without fuel, what about with fuel?
Fuel station is included, uh, is fuel station with or without retail sales.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Oh, yeah, I, I didn't see that.
I apologize.
So I, I would go along with Mr. Sapp with getting rid of the bars and cocktail landings too.
Yeah.
Yes.
One just properly yet.
This is right here, um, on seven, where, you know where the school is?
Definitely.
That area right in there, but it's county-owned.
Well, um, this is helpful, this is the kind of direction we're looking for. We can, uh, we can proceed now, what we'll do is bring, bring back, if it is your direction to do so, we'll proceed with bringing back a full plant development rezoning package, um, in terms of the process of how this is adopted. Do you all want to see this before it goes to the planning board? One more time, in, in a similar format, uh, kind of, this kind of workshop format, or do you want it to just go straight to the planning board at this point? What would you, how do you envision the next step after we have it prepared?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I, I'm satisfied you took notes of everything that we suggested, so, I mean, I don't feel personally that we need to come back before us, before zoning.
I would just like, you know, whenever we divide these lots up, I want us to not say so, so. I mean, I don't want to send, sell five acres to one entity and need to sit on it, because, I mean, we want business, I mean, we don't want somebody to buy this for speculation.
Could that be, excuse me, Mr. Chair, could that be a condition in the, in the RFP, is that what we?
You can make it a condition in the contract of site. Then you, then you've got a breach contract action available if they, if they buy it. Same reason I would like you to use developer agreements, it creates another opportunity for us to enforce the requirements that you are requiring the developer to agree to with us.
Did I? Yes, I did.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, in, in the list, uh, of the schedule of uses, there's also funeral homes, crematory, is that, is that okay?
Yeah, I don't see that going. I thought, I thought it was crossed out, I don't know. Yeah.
What about, um, cemetery, lull Berry, and Mother's Day, huh? That's, we want.
It's, it's gray.
Yeah.
It's gray, yeah.
The back pages are the more of the scraps.
Yeah.
So the only, so the only list is this two-page document.
Yeah, very.
Right after the master concept plan, is the proposed scheduling.
We better take it back here, so if it comes back here without taking back the moral.
There's only another one.
Yeah.
At some point, you just got to get going, right?
Absolutely.
But be, uh, perfect to the enemy if it did. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Maybe you'll probably hit that down next door. Alright, number eleven, Dog Connor Building Project Second Antendiment to Right Construction Amendment.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, this is my item, uh, in the absence of anyone else. You previously approved in agreement with Wright Construction to perform, uh, renovations to the Dog Connor Building. And at the last board meeting, you approved the county contributing the additional sums necessary to complete the project. Uh, this is the agreement amendment with Wright Construction to approve a guaranteed maximum price. To approve the list of subcontractors and the design and all that work that, that they've gone over with, uh, Glade Youth Livestock and gotten approval for. And that you also approved, uh, so that Wright Construction can begin the work. Uh, you approved the budget amendment today earlier, so all the funding has been put into place to lay the guaran- up to the guaranteed maximum price amount. Uh, if you approve this amendment, then it will first establish the guaranteed maximum price for the construction part of the project. Uh, it will approve the list of the subcontractors and the work to be performed, the scope of services. And it will also be a notice to proceed, um, to Wright Construction so that they can start, go ahead and go. Uh, so that's what this amendment does.
So I need now as much. Mr. Chairman, I move to through the second end. To the amendment with Wright Construction, which approves authorization to proceed with construction of Dog Connor Building Project at a guaranteed maximum price of one million, sixty-one thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars, and which authorizes the chair to sign the second amendment.
Second.
Question by Commissioner Sapp, second by Commissioner Taylor, um, any discussion? All favor?
Alright.
Foes? Passes five zero.
Second.
Alright, number twelve, Your County Manager, Paul Cardile, employment agreement. So, we have looked this over and looked this over, and there's been a little, there were a little snag in some of our stuff with the FRS, is saying that, so Mr. Carlisle is retired, and we thought we could, he could just opt out of that, but for a retirement system, and we could use, uh, funds to pay his salary. But, um, right now, we, we're still trying to figure it out with FRS, but they're saying that we have to pay twenty-five percent, twenty-five point nine percent of his salary into the FRS, even though he's not going to get nothing out of it, and county's not getting nothing out of it. And it's just quite a sum of money, but, um, basically, the county's even, I'm retired, county's doing the same thing on my little, little budget too. But, so it's something we're gonna have to look into, but right now, today, Mr. Carlisle has, um, has asked for a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year in his health insurance. And I've got these papers here that'll show you what, um, what June's salary and her benefits total, and what Mr. Carlisle's, who's gonna end up costing. Does anybody want this, Mr. Colonel?
Yes, sir.
But, um, so in his hundred fifty thousand yearly salary, it's gonna come up to fourteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-four cents more total than what we were paying, uh, Mrs. Fisher with the benefits and everything. I feel that Mr. Carlisle's been here before, I've worked with him before, he is a, he is a go-getter, and, um, I, I feel that he's worth this extra money, I mean, we would, June would have been up for another, so I would probably end up giving her the next, um, her contract was up, we would probably give her more money too, so the fourteen thousand is a whole lot. And then Mr. Carlisle agreed to take this and we'll work on whatever we can do on the pension in the future. But, um, but right now, we need somebody to come in here and, and grab the bull by the horns and let's get going. So, um, I'm all for accepting this offer.
Mr. Chairman, I must approve, accepting this offer to Mr. Carlisle's county manager.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Sap, second by Commissioner Taylor. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I remember a time I stood in front of a judge, and he said, uh, at the beginning of the hearing, "Mr. Pringle, I'm inclined to grant your motion. Would you like to say something now that will talk me out of it?" So I'm gonna be brief, and I'm not gonna say much. But the approval is for the approval of the employment agreement. I mean, what you've talked about are the wages, but we have an entire employment agreement, so the motion is also to authorize, should also be to authorize the chair to sign the employment agreement. And the employment agreement is, is, um, very similar to what you had with Ms. Fisher in her employment agreement. Um, and, and we have addressed, uh, as best I could, the retirement concept. We, Mr. Carlisle and I worked through this, Mr. Carlisle's been very, uh, helpful in, 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 in working through this process of, of, of discussing this employment agreement. Uh, he wants to come help the county, he wants to be here, um, and, and so he's been very cordial in that, in that interaction. We were gonna try to have, he was gonna opt out of FRS, he was gonna get paid a hundred and fifty, and then we were gonna take the balance, and, and the health insurance, and then we're gonna take the balance and put it in a 401K or a 57D retirement plan separate and apart from Mr. Carlisle. Well, the FRS saying that it's mandatory that we write a check of twenty-five point nine percent, has just screwed all that up. And I wanna try to get that undone. But right now, Mr. Carlisle's saying, "Okay, just pay me the hundred and fifty thousand dollars."
So I need to put that in my motion?
The motion just needs to say it's a motion to approve at the salary of a hundred and fifty thousand and to authorize the chair to sign the employment agreement.
Well, I move to, what Mr. Pringle said. No, not for the, second.
I'll second what Mr. Sap said, Mr. Pringle said.
Well, I already had Mr. Taylor say the first one, but. So we got as much revised by Mr. Sap, second by Mr. Taylor again, um, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Passes by the.
Mr. Chairman, I just would, would like to add one more thing. If we can get FRS straight, and thinking straight, like they should be, so they don't charge us, then I would like to come, I would like the right, the ability to come back in the future and maybe amend this employment agreement to do that, uh, retirement, yes, sir, stuff that I mentioned earlier, um, you know, to get it right.
In the start fee?
Effective immediately.
Immediately.
Yes, sir. Eleven fifty-two. I said by noon. That was my call.
You did say that.
I did.
Up on the board.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Carlisle.
All right, we will move on to constitutional offices. Everything in the Sheriff's Department?
We're good.
Very good. Time to see if I have anyone across, so, does Danny got anything? I don't see anybody else, um, county attorney?
Yes, sir, I had a note of something I wanted to say. I talked to you about the, the policy on the approval of warrants, uh. I'm sorry, no, that was the only thing. That was the only thing. And I did send a letter as the Lord had asked to you, Kurt, about the, just the notification. The, the, thanks to me about, so I didn't, I'll answer questions.
Any questions for Mr. Pringle? County manager, do you have anything?
No, I'd just like to say thank you all for, for support and looking forward to doing some good things here in Glaze County, get some projects, uh, to the board, working with staff. It's all done.
Department heads, Mr. Bishan, you have anything?
Yes, I just want to say, uh, welcome aboard, Mr. Carlisle, I'm a term for a new user.
I see, um, Jenny Huffman in the audience, and I know, are Jenny Allen, anyway. I do, I don't, I thought maybe she was here for, um, you retired now, right?
Yes, sir.
How many years?
Nine.
Well, we want to thank you for your service, and, um, I didn't get to do that part before, but I know, I think you had a retirement, are you? I'm sure, but I must have been around, I think. But anyway, I, for the board, I would like to thank you for all the years you put in, and the good job that you did.
Thank you, thank you very much. I appreciated the opportunity to walk through the town, and I'm not done.
Okay.
I would like to add, um, it was just a joy and a pleasure to work with Miss Allen, who's very professional, sort of knowledgeable, worked well with the public, and, and we would dearly miss.
Don't cry.
As my, as my, as a, as a employee, but also as a friend.
Okay, um, department heads, we have to, from Bailey.
Recorder working with Mr. Carlisle, it's the subject.
Okay, um, who else I got here? Nope, seeing the other one, everybody ran off. We'll move on to commissioner items, and then we'll start with Mr. Barnes.
I had a call concerning the Colbert at the end of Lehman and seventy-eight, that's what I went with, caving in. Talked to Archie, who talked to DOT and the Bell, they sent someone out there to inspect it, and then getting all of them to go to replace that Colbert. Like you said, we'll work with them once they get there to set up, really, he tore the field, so we should have that control.
I respect.
Uh, I'd like to welcome Mr. Carlisle aboard, uh, I would, I would like to, for us to think of, maybe in the next month or so, after he gets back running, uh, you know, maybe having a workshop about our priorities as a commission, uh, and, and as the county thinks that are concerning us, or things that we'd like to have looked at. You know, this, this, uh, development, I was, I was, I'm still very concerned about the industrial parts of it. Uh, I believe we can address that, though, in the, uh, in the site plans, you know, things of that nature. I just don't want to see it be harmful to neighbors, e- e- even not as much as always, but as far as drainage and everything else, I think we need to keep that in mind, and, uh, make sure that everyone's going to be cordial with each other. I do like where they, where it was, uh, changed for a five-hundred-foot buffer. I think that was very important, that was a very, very good step.
Mr. Manager, you have a question? What, what does buffer mean?
You can't have nothing in that area, five hundred foot away.
So it's just a distance, not a, not a?
Yeah, yes, sir. Yes, five hundred foot buffer away from you.
There you go, I believe that's it. Mr. Taylor?
Welcome, Mr. Carlisle, glad to have you, looking forward to, to projects that are gonna get down in Glaze County, and so much you did, helped me grow, and I do, I'm a student, and appreciate everything she did. She got the ball rolling, she helped keep the ball rolling on some of the things, and, um, thank you, Mr. Smith, for coming. I've been trying to get that business park up and running since I came, so, we're on the way, thank you. Uh, just one concern, I, I mentioned, uh, while Miss June was here, I can't believe if I just talk to her personally or, or in a meeting. But the subdivision that's out by Daniels Road, that entrance, is that, does anybody have any updates on that? Has that been running?
It, it.
Is it?
Under the brick, it's open now, yes.
It's opening out, okay.
Yeah, back to sports and Philly.
Okay, good, I'm glad to hear that, obviously, that's taken care of, I do have some concerns with elderly people not being able to come off twenty-seven, you know, with a, with a language, just having to turn directly into it, okay. Um, the only other thing is just, I mean, I would hesitate to call it minor, because I wanna take pride in our, our building, but I looked at the city hall and how everything looks at the city hall, and, uh, I think we just need some sprucing up for our courthouse here. So, um, I will make a call of Archie, he isn't here, he used to come to the morning meetings, but I know we keep him busy, so he's probably out in the field somewhere. Yeah, just some, um, pressure washing and maybe some, um, gardening, but just whatever we can do to make our building look better. And then there's a newspaper thing that's been out there for five years that no one uses.
It's gone.
Is it gone?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I have right now.
All right, um, Mr. Sap?
I received a phone call, phone call yesterday afternoon, one of the best I've had since I've been sitting on this board. A man thanked me for his new road in, on Cornelius, it's all done. Cornelius is complete. But I haven't heard anything on the monster mess.
It's supposed to be starting right up in Cornelius.
That's right, but I've been told for years, oh, we're gonna start here, and it hasn't happened. But I do believe it is gonna happen, but it was good news to finally get that. I'm so glad Mr. Carlisle here, because I'm gonna turn court debt, acres over to him, kill him. But, uh, no, I, I'm very glad that that is finally moving on, and I'm glad Mr. Carlisle is here. And if y'all remember the, the last meeting, it was, I was talking about Mrs. Bishan needing an assistant, what she does, we haven't done anything about that. Are y'all interested in doing something like that with the lady? Helping her, give her an assistant? She's got a lot of work.
I, I, I'm, sorry, I thought that was, I thought I saw the posting for it already, maybe.
Has it, has it been posted?
For a file clerk in, uh, those areas?
No.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, I, I, I mean, I thought that was the job title for it, I'm sorry.
Now, this is for her and assistant, and they're handling some of these projects, if she's working on someone that has a little bit of experience and knows what to do.
Yeah, I think we should, I think we should look at it.
All right, that's good, let's move forward with that. And also, y'all know about it, as our, our post office was just arbitrarily closed, and I found out some of the tales about it, but anyway, we're moving forward, our congressman is aware of it, our state representative. But, and we talked about maybe, I don't know what the board can do. I talked to Mrs. Bishan, I'm trying to get a hold of another department in the postal service. But if, if y'all can think of anything, y'all might, someone you could talk to, help us get our post office back, I would really appreciate it. And, um, I think that's all I have.
That's simple, but, um, Lakeport Community meetings tonight at six o'clock.
And Saturday.
Saturday.
Saturday, Catfish Festival is following Saturday, Ortona, cane grinding is the following Saturday, I think, I believe.
Wait a minute, hold on, which cane, which, Catfish?
The twenty-fifth. Cane grinding, I don't know when, uh, several field days, I've got big sign on when that is, but. Fourteen from fifty, no.
Sir, if I may, do you have a flyer that we could post on the county website, my PC, that you could get to me?
I'll send it to you. But, um, so I, I think all y'all were here when Senator Drow and Senator, or Representative Tucker were here that night for the, um, turkey branch meeting, but I think that meeting went well, I think, um, Senator Drow took it very seriously, and, and I'm okay. Having an outside independent engineering firm come in and look at the design and see, and, um, if it passes or fails, but, um, I don't know, I think this board should, if it does pass and it continues on, we need to push really hard if they make some improvements to the drainage in that whole area as part of that plan, so we'll work on that, but, um, a lot of, a lot of voices against, but there was a lot of, they brought up some good points about, um, us being a reservoir and not getting compensation for anything when they come in to build these things, and, um, I think Tony Witten got there and spoke that here we're a physically constrained county, and you're passing resolutions to take money away from, so, and I think he made a really good point, but. Anyway, good meeting, um, that's all I've got, anybody else have anything else? Seeing how our business is done, I think we are adjourned at, can I put my, um, uh, you with it?
We're calling fire.
You have something?
I did, I did.
Why?
I appreciate you, Mr. Patterson, coming to the Muse Community Association meeting, and to let you guys know that we also have a festival of muse, it's the honey festival, that would be April fifth, and I'll send you a flyer, so maybe you can put that on your website. Um, and this gentleman asked about a buffer, and I didn't know if your buffer also include landscaping. Typically, it's not just a two-hundred or a five-hundred dollar, or a five-hundred-foot buffer, what I typically see shows landscaping included with that, but I didn't know if that's what he was asking or not.
Just wanna make clear, with, uh, I didn't design the project, we just reviewed it on behalf of county, but my recollection is that, uh, they are proposing a buffer with a certain number of plantings per a hundred feet, and so that will be included in that buffer.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
You said April fifth?
April fifth, yep. And that's at the Community Association Building on Loblawy.
I know it is.
Yep.
I went there once.
Any other business that needs to be tendered? All right, we are adjourned, what's under the?
I have sent out, so I have emails, I have letters, I don't respond.
Okay, sure.